We call nice being to be ordered. Let's have the real call.
Kessler.
Here.
Kanega.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Ewer.
Here.
Binner.
Here.
Harton.
Here.
Crum.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Nice indication, be given by Pastor David Vedder of the West Hayesville Baptist Church.
Let's pray. Our Father God, this is a month for giving thanks, and so we pause to give thanks to you because you are the source of everything that's good in our lives. And Father, we want to thank you for this beautiful weather that we've been able to enjoy the last few days. It's a gift. Father, I also thank you for this community in which we live, the good people that live here. And Father, I just pray that you will help us during the Christmas season that we are about to begin, to remember the needy people that live among us and to do what we can to show that we care. Father, we thank you for the family and friends that many of us have had the privilege of spending time with over this last few days during the Thanksgiving season. Father, they enrich our lives in so many ways, may we never take them for granted. And Father, we just thank you for the leaders of our community. We thank you, Father, for our mayor, members of the city council, for those who serve us so faithfully. They invest a lot of time and energy to help our, to make our community a better place in which to live, and so we give thanks for them. Bless them tonight, Father. Give them your wisdom. Help them make good decisions in every matter that they have to consider tonight. We pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Praise your allegiance.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start the meeting there tonight, if we need to add to the agenda, under other business, need to add item E, a Ball &amp; Son contract. I need a motion to add that to the agenda?
Need a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and second to add the Ball &amp; Son contract on item E for other business discussion. Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Kanega.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
No presentation through minutes, A minutes on number 13th, 2017.
I think motion may approve the minutes of the number 13th, 2017.
Second.
No second to approve the minutes. Discussion. Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Kanega.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Good item one, citizen's beard, A centric candy card. Whoever would like to come forward or not like to come forward.
Good evening, Captain Tony Tracy, City County Fire Station 37, or pardon, 34, here in Hayesville. I spent 27 years at 37, I forgive you. Just give you an up-to-date of the department's activities within the city limits of Hayesville. Thus far in the month of November, we run a total of eighty-six calls of varying purpose, emergency medical. We have had four structured fires of significance here in town this month. The numbers on those of a total, they combined for a total of $405,000 in value of property. The, for instance, combined, and of that way of $106,500 of loss. So we did have a pretty timely response to all of them. I know one of them was pretty noteworthy on Saralee in the apartment building, contained it to the building of origin and minimized loss there, so we were pretty proud of that. We had a good response there. Another topic I wanted to make you aware of is we have a few addresses here in town where we have what we call a chronic, non-acute needs. We run a lot of assist to citizen calls there, a lot of lift assist, and the county has instigated a new grant-funded position to minimize these calls and to provide other system or other assistance to the citizens. It's called the Links Program, and what happens is, is the, it's, there's no income guidelines for the citizens that reside in the district or the fire district, which includes the city of Hayesville, and it's for people that have non-emergency needs, but they need them often and they don't have other resources. Physically disabled, people that are trying to live independently, and they have some impairment that makes that difficult for them, and instead of calling 911 and getting EMS and fire units out there, they're working to find them other resources to make them more independent and to help them live on their own without tying up emergency resources like fire engines and ambulances. So it's called the Links Program. It's being temporarily funded by the county, and so far it's been extremely successful. We have a few addresses, like I said, we have a few addresses here that we refer to it, and hopefully, the, the goal is, is to take the burden off of the emergency service that it's placing and still provide resources for these people to live independently without having to go into a home-type situation or, or anything else that would place further burden on them. It's totally voluntary. There's no cost. It's a case management-type resource, solution-focused, and totally voluntary participation by the individual. What'll happen is when we have reoccurring calls to an address for non-emergency-type situations, we'll refer that to the person with EMS that manages this program, and they'll make contact with that person, and if that person is receptive to these services, our county agency will, will work with them to determine what their needs are and find them available resources. So, so far, we're very hopeful that that's gonna be a successful program. This, like I said, is temporarily funded by City County EMS, and I anticipate that once the end of the funding period, the trial period is over, they're gonna find that, that the need is there and, and find a way to continue it. With EMS especially, their resources are a little more stretched, a little thinner than ours, and if it'll take the, the burden off their ambulances, it'll be even more successful. So as far as the response for the month of November so far, that's really all I have. One other quick item, my senior firefighter in the back of the room, firefighter Tony Drescher, is retiring December 21st of this year after 27 years. We'll be having a coffee in the afternoon at the fire station, and Chief, if he passes off the officers, everybody's welcome to attend and come in and have a piece of cake and shake his hand and send him on his way. That's all I have unless you have any questions.
No teaming. I appreciate you. You have one?
The Links Program.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, half of those calls probably were to my folks' house this last night.
You know?
Why send me one day?
They all have, they all have one thing in common, they're delightful people.
I know they are.
And we're gonna miss them. You know, your folks and everyone else that's in that predic-
So what you're saying is that you'll contact this program and they will get in contact with?
Yes, and they will, they will, if, if your parents have been referred by one of our, and I don't know who has.
I don't know, 'cause...
If one of the other shifts or one of the other crews has, they'll refer to this Links Program, like I said, is, it's up at our office of the emergency medical director, the doctor, the physician that manages EMS.
I was just curious, he's called one three times in...
And that's a perfect candidate.
In one week, and then...
Right.
He's only been out, we have three weeks.
Right, and that's a perfect candidate in what it is.
Yeah, I know, that's why, I thought if there was more information...
At other times, when it's a, a physical impairment and there's possibility of injury, it's perfectly appropriate for 911 and for us to respond. So what we don't want is for people to not want to call us or hesitate to call us when there's actual need, 'cause we're, we're still ready to respond and we'll gladly do something.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're, we're very hopeful that other cases where we've had chronic, non-emergent use of the system for periods of years.
Oh, we're not business weeks.
And we're, we're talking, we're talking ten or twelve times a month. I'm sure Chief knows what I'm talking about.
Well, I do appreciate your time and effort going to their house numerous times this last month.
We're very glad. We're very glad to serve. It's normal, so.
Me too.
All right. Thank you, folks.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Blue item two, approval of license and bonds, A drinking establishment license renewal, Mikasa restaurant, 101 North Main Street. Mr. Crum?
I make a motion that we approve the drinking establishment license renewal for Mikasa restaurant, 111 North Main Street.
Second.
Most second to approve the license renewal for Mikasa. Discussion. Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Kanega.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Item B is a cereal malt beverage license renewal for Cash Savers, number 646, 21 North Main. Mr. Crum?
Make a motion that we approve the cereal malt beverage license renewal for Cash Saver number 646 at 201 North Main Street.
Second.
Most second to approve license renewal for Cash Savers. Discussion. Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Kanega.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Item three, our question of ordinance, that resolutions, A, a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation temporary notes, Thursday, 26, 2018, the city of Hayesville, Kansas. We've got, there was from the bonding that will go with this for us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Brett Shogren, Assistant Vice President, George K. Baum and Company, financial advisor to the city. Previous meeting, city, the city has approved necessary water, sewer, paving, and drainage improvements within Country Lakes Edition and Country Lakes Second Edition to be paid by the property owners via specialist taxes. You've been through this before. This requires financing via temporary notes, interim financing. Once the project is complete, final costs are determined and permanent financing via GO bonds are issued, and the payments of those bonds are then repaid by the property owners via specialist taxes. The resolution before you tonight authorizes public sealed bid, temporary note sale of $1,175,000 in general obligation temporary notes, which will take place in two weeks, December 11th. I will return on, to that meeting and explain the results of the sale and have the council adopt a temporary note issuance resolution at that time. Temporary notes after that will be, or will close on January 3rd, and that's when the funding comes to the city. Be happy to answer any questions.
Right, you just mentioned $1,175,000. My paperwork says $1,182,000.
That is, that is the total project cost as identified by the engineering firm, and they, they use 5% of the total cost as financing costs and temporary note financing to cover cost of issuance and capitalized interest and things like that. We itemize that separately, and so we haven't taken into account that 5%. Our issuance costs, we think, will be even less than that, so that's why we're issuing $1,175 instead of $1,182. And we did a similar, we did a similar situation for your last round of temporary notes, the series.
When we do the motion on this, we don't need the amount though, do we? Do we just need the whole, the top of it?
We can just pass the resolution as presented.
I'll make a motion that we pass the resolution as presented.
Second.
Motion to second to pass the resolution for the temporary notes on Thursday, 28th. Discussion. Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Kanega.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Moved item four, no communications, A government body announcements, announcements government body'd like to make. Is there? No?
Yeah. Just a couple announcements. On Wednesday, they have at eight o'clock in the morning Panera Bread will be offered at the senior center, and on Wednesday also at 12:30, they're gonna be playing Christmas Family Bingo, so if you're interested, just go to the senior center and enjoy yourself.
Over at the library, just a reminder, they have a morning storytime, storytime at 10:30 on Mondays and Tuesdays, excuse me, Tuesdays and Thursdays. On Tuesday, December 5th, will be the next meeting for the Horticulture Club, they believe, I believe, down in the basement, and that's, it's from 6:30 to eight o'clock on Nick, on Tuesday, December 5th. The next genealogy group will meet Saturday, December 9th, at two o'clock. The next Monday movie, they're having one tonight, but their next one will be December 11th, and that movie is Fantastic Beasts and Where to Find Them, and the next monthly Lego Club will be Thursday, December 14th, and that'll be from four to six p.m. And that's all I have tonight.
Shawty Bees has a tree over there in their restaurant, and it has a lot of the senior names on it, and you can draw or choose a name off the tree and buy a senior person that probably doesn't have any family around for Christmas, so I thought that was kind of a nice idea, so I'd like to see some of the citizens go over there and take a few names. We've done that, and the girls I work with, it's really fun.
Yeah, they take them to all the, all the seniors at the Care Home.
Right.
And at the High Rise, and at the Senior Living duplex over there.
Right, right. So it's just strictly Hayesville, so.
Item D is a press release and map from KDHG regarding the scheduled public event realization. It'll take place Tuesday, December 5th, six o'clock at the Hayesville Middle School Gymnasium. And then item C is the certificate of Kansas from City County Election Office for the election election we had, and item D is a thank you card from the Hayesville Historic Committee. Item five, old business, A KDHG project update.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The, the map that we had in last council meeting packet is still pretty accurate. The contractor has started working on Broadway Waterline. Remember, right, last council meeting, those plans did get approved. The contractor is still is working on getting pressure testing and sampling done on Phase One north of 79th. They're working on Seneca, starting there ahead and east, and also the water main that goes down the access road over by Dorner Park Complex. If everything goes well, they're hoping to turn those services over to KDHG's private plumber late this week.
And again, if you want additional information, December 5th, six o'clock, the Middle School. That will go on to item six of the business, A, consideration of the zone change.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. In your packet, you received a staff report pertaining to lots one and two, Block A, River Forest Second Edition. The applicant has requested a zone change from A, single family, to BB one and two families. These two lots are located on the south side of Carla, closest on the east side of the railroad, the two closest properties to the east side of the railroad. These lots have sat vacant for many, many years, over sixteen years, and pretty much that's all I have. I'm ready for any questions.
Questions, council? If not, Mr. Crum?
I was gonna say, looking at the minutes, there was nobody there to talk against it or complain or...
No, there was not.
And there was notices sent out to everybody, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So we need a motion to approve or deny, Ms. Crum?
I make a motion, we approve the rezone of lots one and two, Block A, River Forest Second Edition to BB, or to one and two family, BB.
Second.
Most second to approve the zone change as presented by the panel. Discussion. Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Kanega.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Blue item B is the West Grand Turn Lane paperwork, acceptance of the waiver and payment. You're on again.
Good evening again. Earlier in the year, you issued, sold and issued, Series 2017A temporary notes for the West Grand Turn Lane for the school district. The school district wished to pay for that upfront, but they don't own the road. You have to build the road, and they get to pay for it, and they have opted, since they're the 100% of the property owners, instead of long-term financing, they've opted to pay for it all upfront, so they, at their last meeting, November 20th, they signed and adopted the waiver of special assessments, which means you don't have to go through the full special assessment process, and they signed that and delivered that to your city administrator, as well as the check for the balance to redeem the temporary notes. Once, once that waiver is approved tonight and the cash they delivered is approved, that starts a forty-five-day redemption process that's required by the state treasurer's office, so the earliest that the notes can be officially redeemed is January 11th, and forty-five days from tonight is January 11th, and those notes will be paid off by the school district. We have been answering questions about that.
You have motioned to approve the waiver of the acceptance. Mr. Kessler?
I think motion, we approve the waiver as presented.
Second.
Most second to approve the waiver of the school district on West Grand Turn Lane. Question? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Kanega.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Crum?
Do we also have to approve the payment?
They've already made the payment here to us.
I just want to know...
Most second, we've got forty-five days.
That starts the forty-five days redemption process. I, I think you probably should accept the payment as well.
Okay.
I'm not the attorney, but...
I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept the payment as well.
Second.
Most second to payment for the Turn Lane. Discussion. Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Kanega.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Thank you.
We already have the money in the bank.
Oh, we're just going off the, what we had on here.
Item C, consideration in installation of the overhead garage door.
Good evening again. Before you deny, is the proposals for installation of overhead garage doors on our north shop, the east side. Previously, in years, these have been used just for storage, and last years, we have gotten rid of some stuff, auctioned it off, so these five days are completely wide open right now. Our wastewater department is utilizing that and wanting to utilize that to park their equipment in there, so we've got proposals from three. Coats Garage Doors is the lowest at $11,230. I can answer any questions for you.
Got a motion to approve, Ms. Crum?
I make a motion, we accept the bid of $11,230 from Coats Garage Doors for installation of five overhead doors.
Second.
Most second to approve Coats Garage Doors for the installation of the overhead doors. Discussion. Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Kanega.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes. Thank you.
And a blue item D for the economic development report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Yeah, before you, the economic development report for the third quarter. We had three businesses, which is a little on the low side, but I, I promise the fourth quarter will, will rebound. We're just kind of some of the stuff that's up in the air, but overall, good. New housing starts, again, 1.2 million in total valuation of the new housing starts. That's a great third quarter. Fourth quarter, again, is looking, looking good. We're, we're right on par with where we were last year, just doing the numbers. New resident surveys with those, new water services, about the same as last quarter, or last, this, this year, last third, 2016 third quarter, except for the 54% renting versus the forty... Turned the tables a little bit, which is good. We, we want, we want people buying houses and not so much turnover on the renting. Factors remain consistent with the same, except for the guy said my wife made me move here. The Hayesville Land Bank, again, as you may know, that we, we've been selling lots for the past year over in River Forest. We've been quite successful, in my opinion. We've sold twenty lots. We have one pending, and actually, we had another one come in. We have two lots pending. One that came in before, this was already finalized, so another, another lake lot put on reserve, so good things are happening over there. HFI marketing campaign and the advertising campaign that we do is pretty similar. Again, the online strategic marketing, you might, if you're on YouTube or online, you might see some of our videos. HFI is, is trying to get together to, with the help of Chris, our multimedia specialist, put together some, some content, some asset, commercial assets that we can run besides our cartoon commercials. We just gotta give him a year to get that collection going, and we'll, we'll program them, but everybody seems to be happy with that because we can manage, we can measure the results coming in on the analytics of, of who's viewing what, where they're coming from, and that's, that's better than a, any other campaign, I believe, we've ever ran. Our YouTube channel seven, again, we had three subscribers, and now we've, we're up to thirty-two. It's being utilized for more than just the council meetings and planning meetings. We're, we're gonna have more PSAs. We have the commercials up there and available for viewing. Very, very pleased with what Chris has done with the YouTube channel seven. Grohe Hayesville Tree Farm continues to, to exceed expectations. We've been forty new trees so far this year, and with new home builds, and last I was told, we are, we're gonna be about a hundred and fifty trees planted in our parks and green space. IC Trees donated a hundred trees, valued at over fifteen thousand, so it's just, the farm's opened up several doors for us, and we're, we're very pleased with it. Bike Hayesville, you can, hopefully, you've seen the racks that have been installed as you enter finally. We've, we've kind of got all the pieces put together. Appreciate Tony with Public Works getting those put in before the holiday season. We have one over by the Vicker Station and, and between Vicker Station and Dollar General. The Fixer Station was installed by Public Works. The, the first Fixer Station was installed with the grand opening of the hack. We'll get plaques and everything for those to see who those were dedicated from, and we'll do kind of a big grand over ribbon cutting to celebrate all those amenities that were put in. We're also doing a, Wichita State has contacted us to put out a general business and a senior survey for, they're, they're looking to, they're exploring their options to come to Hayesville with some sort of satellite campus, so they have petitioned us to put on the survey. So if you go onto our, the city Facebook page, we have a link to the general survey. We'd appreciate your time in taking it. Before the meeting, we have fifty-eight respondents. Fifty of those are female, so come on, guys, let's get our data in there. But yeah, we'll, we'll be putting out the business survey and the senior survey. We'll take hard copies to the senior center and the tower, so we'll, we'll kind of give them a good, good idea of what's going on. Property annexation over 79th and Broadway has been annexed, and, and now we are in the process, I believe, of the, the zone change to light commercial. We, we don't have any ideas of what could go in there. We're, we're still kind of hoping and praying that some good commercial retail goes in there, so that. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moved then to item E, which is the Ball &amp; Sons contract. This is a contract as the council approved the historic to move in the church. The reason is with you tonight, originally, this contract was not till February. That was causing a real problem for the church in Cunningham that's going to be giving it, giving us the church, so the Ball &amp; Sons, Mr. Ball, has contacted and said if we were to approve a contract, that he could move it up to, move it in January. That's why it's before you tonight to... That's why it's before you tonight to see if we can get approval, so we can try and get this moved in January to meet the church's timeframe. So we're open for any questions may have. Mr. Finner?
And will be all ready for it to be moved and set in January?
Uh, no, there's other things we've gotta do. We've gotta get information for the access ties, for the foundations and so forth. So that'll have to happen in the month of December.
So it will be tentatively set near the lot or near the place?
It will be set on the foundation, of course. We will pour the foundation, and we've moved over on that foundation when it comes in.
Okay. That's what I meant with it. Once they drop it, it's gonna be where it's gonna stay.
Yes, it'll be on the foundation. Other questions? If not, what would you like to do with this contract? Mr. Crum?
I make a motion that we approve the contract as presented from Ball and Sons, heavy structural movers to move the church from Cunningham, Kansas, to Historic District here in Hayesville.
I think we'll make that, make the change on number six, this month of January, not February, March.
Oh, I'll amend that to go ahead and on item six to change that from February to January.
So a motion and a second to approve the contract presented with the change on item six to the month of January. Question? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Finner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item seven, Department Reports, A, the Press Release as well.
Rose has an announcement on Village Christmas.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Show the pretty side. I am here to let you know about the events coming up in the Village Christmas, coming up this Saturday, coming Saturday, December 2nd. The event will actually start at 4:00 at the Masonic Lodge, where they will have a Soup and Chili Feed. Adults will be $6. This is their main fundraiser for our area, so their, their Soup and Chili Feed will be $6, $3 for children under 14 years of age, 14 and under. We will also hold the silent auction at the Masonic Lodge as well. That'll be held from 4 to 7. The Candy Cane Dash and Grab will be in the, it will start in front of the Wirehouse at 5:00. Horse rides with Famous TJ will start at 5:00 and will end at 7:00. It will be across from the library. Wirehouse will, we're pretty excited about this one, will actually be decorated by Endless Treasures, a local business, who will decorate it, basically covering 30, 30 years, so three decades, from the 1930s on up to the 60s, trying to make it historic and let you know show what a historic village or historic home would look like. So we're pretty excited about that. The concessions will be from 5 to 9:00 in front of the library, from Pat's Concessions, horse-drawn carriages from 5 to 9:00 in front of the Wirehouse. Yes. City Pride Lighting Ceremony will take place or start at 5:30 a.m. or 5:30 p.m. in Pride Park. I have been told there's been a special guest who is planning on coming, I'm not sure. Potentially a second one, we believe. Caroling will also be, and there will be a sing-along as well at the lighting ceremony. Caroling will take place throughout the Historic District by the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts Local Troops, as well as the River Church, who will be in the, in the gazebo area. Kids Crafts and Refreshments will be in the community building from 6:00 to 8:30, although the crafts, we have a lot of them, we have about 800, so we will keep doing the crafts until we run out. Pictures with Santa will be from 6:00 to 9:00 in the Historic Bank. The library will have the electronic, nostalgic electronic train display, as well as storytelling. The quilters will be there. Hot cider will be served. And we have a special thing here with grab bags. We're doing something new this year. Grab bags will be $3 this year. There's some extra really good stuff in here, and what's really neat is that they, we have some extra prizes in there. Some of the prizes are worn theater tickets, as well as La Pasada gift cards, Little Caesar's gift cards, funnel cakes from Pat's Concessions for the night of the event. You take your chance of getting one, one for $3 or two for $5. We're pretty excited about these little bags. And we will also be having programs available throughout the Historic District. They will have all the information in there, as well as the sing-along songs, so we will have these everywhere. Any questions?
Credit cards.
Oh, and I forgot the credit cards. We are doing something new this year. At the silent auction, at the end of the silent auction, we will have the opportunity for those who would like to bid, if they would like to pay by credit card, that will be available. We will also sell grab bags by credit card as well, if, so, yeah. Did I miss anything, Ginger?
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
That's a big one, credit cards.
Yeah.
Good job, sis.
State clerk, Katie. See, please chief.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to introduce our visiting officer this evening, Officer Justin Jacks. He's a master police officer of the Police Department. He's currently assigned to Campus High School as a score resource officer up there. Also congratulate him as you go by, he was voted by his peers as the Officer of the Year this year. He was crowned at the Fall Festival this year during the Officer of the Year ceremony, so say hi to him. Also just wanted to give everybody a reminder that with the holidays coming up, people go shopping, even if you're not in Hayesville, if you're somewhere else, make sure that you're hiding those valuables in your cars, locking your doors, those kind of things. Don't be a, don't become a victim. Don't set yourself up for that kind of stuff. Just always be, be safe, make sure you're parking in well-lit areas, things like that, and make sure that you're putting away your valuables, so that you don't make yourself a victim of opportunity. So, that's it.
Thank you. Dave, I work time.
Just some project updates. Stewart Waterline, all of the water main is constructed and in place. They have completed pressure testing and sampling. Last week, they started doing water services. They have 14 more left to do. After that's complete, they will plug the old water main and remove the old fire hydrants. So that's going good. Kirk Orchard Acres, contractors working on driveways, and will be starting on the curb here hopefully this week if the weather allows.
And item D, recreation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So Saturday before all of the Village Christmas events, we will have a Candy Cane Dash and Grab over in the Historic District. It will be at 4:45, similar to an Easter egg hunt, you get all the candy canes you want, as many as you can grab. So 4:45 p.m., free for 10 and younger. And then we have pet portraits with your favorite minion coming up on Monday, December 11th. This will be from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Hack. That's all they have.
Any kind of pet?
Any kind of pet. We've had different kinds of pets. Snakes are... Oh, I don't know. We've had snakes.
Item eight appointments, we have none. Item nine opportunities to be heard, we do have one at this point from Andrew Cookson at Court Place, question four. Mr. Cookson?
Mayor, council members, thank you, I appreciate it. I'm Andrew Cookson, Hayesville, Kansas. I have come to speak tonight on the issue of the Tyson Chicken Plant that may or may not be in the area. Let me go ahead and relieve some of your tension at this moment by jumping completely to the end and to let you know that I don't have a position for or against. Simply stated, I don't have enough specific information. I'm going to bet also, however, neither do you. You see, because from what I've been able to gather from the newspapers, other reports, is that there was some discussion that there was the possibility Tyson might be looking in an area between Hayesville and Clearwater, that the city of Hayesville agreed to accept the letter to say, yes, we'll talk to you about it. And that's it. We don't know when, where, how much, what prices, how many trucks, how much water, what kind of wage, nothing. We don't know what kind of plant. We know nothing factual about it. But if you listen to social media, the news, all sorts of things, you'll hear some amazing things that are going on. $40 an hour wages, campaign contributions that have been taken, millions of trucks that'll be going down roads, all sorts of things. And one, I got one public official who told me last week, he got 300 letters in one week on the issue. Hey, that's a lot of letters, based on very little amount of information that we have. We just recently had an election. We have a wonderful system of government in our nation. It's a representative republic. Each of you are representatives, and each of you can probably attest, there is no way possible that you can represent each and every one of your constituents. They each have a different point of view. You can't cover it all for each one of them. So what we do is we elect representatives. We have primaries, where you state your positions on things, and then we get to vote on who we think best represents our positions. Okay? Simply enough, what I'm here tonight to do is to encourage you to continue to listen, gather information. Don't give in to the social media, the social demands, the mobs, the groups that are going to show up and not add specific information. Continue to do your jobs, as you're doing them very well, by giving informed evaluations to all parties, whether they're county officials, private business, citizens, or all, and then take and make your decisions. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Cookson? Not seeing any. We appreciate your call. Thank you. Any other agenda, citizen, so have you heard? Seeing that, we'll then move on to item 10, executive session. We have nothing. Item 11, ability paid for the first half of November. Ms. Ewert?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we pay the last half of November bills.
Second. Most second, pay the last half of November bills. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Finner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Now twelve, in Senator Jen, we have nothing. Item thirteen, council items, A, council concerns. Council? Any concerns you'd like to bring up? Mr. Crum?
Just have a couple. This weekend, I had somebody call that was having some problem with the water. They were afraid that they had a leak, which they figured out what was wrong pretty quickly. But when I went on the website, I can't find our emergency number anywhere. I couldn't find it under Public Works. I couldn't find it in any of the department stuff. I could not find it anywhere on the website.
Did you say that was an individual who didn't have water?
Uh, well, no, it was something else.
Did that leak?
They thought they did, but they found out it wasn't.
Because I had somebody send me an online issue report, and I answered him immediately because it comes to my mail, so I don't know if it was the same person or not, but there's a place where they can do that, and then also they can call in to the Police Department, which...
See, that's what I wanted, is can we make sure we've got that phone number handy where people know where they can call? Because that's not anywhere on the website.
Yeah, it's listed on the wastewater department, I don't see it listed on the water side.
Okay, I didn't look, maybe I didn't look at the...
Because I called it one night.
Okay. And then I was curious, we approved the new rock wrap for around Ridge Park. When, are we planning on doing that now? Are we going until spring, or what are we doing?
We spoke to the contractor a week, last week. They got stuck in Harper County doing asphalt job, and with the weather, they're trying to knock it out, and they're here in Kirby Park to knock all those out as soon as they can. I'll reach out and try to get an update on that.
Okay, just curious, because I know one of the side benefits was it tend to kind of knock down the geese population over there, and it's kind of starting to get built up again, and I'd kind of like to see it get back as quickly as possible. Okay, thanks. That's all I had.
Ms. Burg?
Yeah, you were a while back, you brought up about the issue with lights in backyards and shine and hide. Have we moved anywhere on that? Do we know anything more about that?
I haven't seen any follow-up coming from the attorney at this point, believe back to 32, November 30. Seeing nothing else, we'll move on then to item B, council action request.
In reference to 209 Sunset, a notice appear in court was issued on November 14th, and the court date is set for January 16th. And then on second Peachwood, I'm hoping once we finish the Christmas decorations, the weather will cooperate, and we'll be able to mill the white crack out. And then 248 Southwestern, resident received the notice and has since corrected the issue